With this, I think I'll, we'll go ahead. It is 6:30 PM. And we will call this meeting to order of September 9th, 2020. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom? Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you. It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. I think Rita seconded, June. So it has been moved and seconded. Or is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Thank you. There's some, there's a majority in favor and the agenda is approved. The first item of business is under policy and governance. Dr. Bedell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to our participants and guests, welcome to our board meeting. The first item that we have with our monitoring workshop meeting is our policy and governance, the adoption and updating of policies to Board Policy Appendix D, BBFA, Board of Conflict of Interest. We're asking the board at this time to take action on that policy update.
So for the board members, we have discussed this policy that requires us to adopt a policy that includes a limits on gifts that a board member can receive the valuation. Mr. Thornton, is there any information that you want to provide the board before we take a motion to move forward on this adoption?
I don't, unless you have questions.
All right. Are there any questions on this mo, on this item at this time? All right. Then it would be in order to receive a motion to approve, to approve or to adopt Board Policy Appendix D, DDBFA, Board Conflict of Interest, maintaining the current level of gift level restrictions that the board currently has. Is moved by Rita, seconded by Jennifer. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. There's a majority in favor and the policy is adopted. Dr. Bedell, the next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration is asking the board to take action on approving the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Kansas City Service Agreement in the amount of $250,000. That is to provide out of school care for up to 1,000 KCPs students at 25 per month. So I want to make sure while we're going through this distance in hybrid learning model because of the pandemic.
Are there any questions on this item? Dr. Bedell, I just had one. I wanted to ask a question. So their capacity goes up to 1,000?
Yes.
And they, and do they also have, does Boys and Girls Club, do we provide them all the materials that they need for serving our students? Or are they, are they providing any technology or any additional items that are required?
Yes, my understanding that we, these are students that are still a part of our system and we provide that. So I, unless, Marla, is there anything I'm missing here with that?
That is correct.
Yeah.
They get everything from the school district. They have checked out devices. They, the only thing that they would actually have the responsibility of doing is making sure that the kids actually get through all of the work that we, our teachers are actually serving the kids as well. So the responsibility is on making sure that they are actively involved and actively engaged in the learning process.
But we provide it all.
We, yes, we do.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the, this item? Hearing none. It would be in order to receive a motion to approve the recommendation, the superintendent to approve the agreement with Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Kansas City.
Hey, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just before you do that, I want to make sure, I think that was at the cost of 100 per month, so that not 25 per month. I want to make sure that that's reflected in the record.
Okay.
In terms of the fee for parents opting to utilize that service for daycare.
Okay. Oh, the, in the amount of $100 per month, to an amount not-
Not per week, but it's 100 per month. And that's not, I didn't reflect that correctly when I said that.
But not to exceed 250,000?
Well, no, no, that's fine. Yeah, correct. That, that doesn't change. I just want to make sure I don't confuse people.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm sorry. Do we, so move? And that's Manny. And is there a second? Ms. Cortez? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this motion? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, you always do that. Sorry.
Thank you. There's a majority in favor and the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Kansas City Service Agreement is approved. The chair now recognizes Dr. Bedell for the workshop presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, we made adjustments to our presentation to align it with us being able to provide the board and the community with summative data. Today, our presentation is on our year-end results and where we are as we begin this school year from a staffing standpoint. The focus is 4.5 in our policy on emergency succession, succession planning and policy 4.9 personnel standards and staffing. So for this presentation, we will have Dr. Jennifer Collier and we will also have Ms. Monica Landis that will provide updates for these policies.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Just want to make sure I'm not muted before I get moving. So, Board Chair, Manser, Board Members, Executive Team, Staff, Community, this is our annual Human Resources Report, which embodies Board Policy 4.5 and 4.9. And I did not include on here, we did do a portion of 4.2 as well, which starts, which starts to speak to the training that we provide for some of our staff. So that is also included in this presentation. And those are tied to our strategic plan, Pillar C, and more specifically, our strategic priorities, number seven and number nine. And once again, this evening, I have with me our talent acquisition and evaluation manager, Monica Landis. She leads much of that recruitment work that happens and there's some great things that she and her team have been doing. And so I wanted her to be able to be a part of this presentation this evening and to be able to speak to some of the great work that we're doing in our department around recruitment and retention of staff. Next slide, please. So the very first policy that I'm going to cover is Policy 4.5. And this really speaks to that capable, empowered leadership that, that we're looking for and looking to establish in our district. It's also very important that at no time, should, there should never be a time when we don't have someone who is equipped and prepared to step into an expanded leadership role. And so there's a lot of training and preparation that happens year in and year out to make sure that we have leaders that are ready to fill various leadership roles in our district, starting with the superintendent, and then all the way to our schools, making sure that we have a strong pipeline for principals and assistant principals. So I'm going to cover some of that data in just a moment. But really, this is a lot about developing top-notch leaders and leadership teams at the district and school site levels. Next slide, please. So some of our key performance indicators for the, our succession planning is first, that leadership succession depth chart, which I provided to you all in advance. And this just illustrates to you all of our executive team leaders, and then who has been designated to serve as that second in command, helping to lead the day to, the day-to-day work within the department, but also that person that's ready to step in, whether that be on an interim or a long-term basis. Also, leadership engagement opportunities that I'm going to talk about in a little bit. What we provide for not only our executive team leaders, but those who serve as directors and as second-in-commands, making sure that they're being sharpened and prepared for leadership. And then also that leadership principal pipeline. One of the things that I state quite frequently, and that is the primary work of the school district is what happens in the schools, at the school sites. And so it is imperative that we have strong leaders in our schools who, who directly lead and guide those teachers who interface with our students every day. So that is the critical piece for us. And so as such, we have established a a very strong principal pipeline through one of our partnerships that I'll talk about in just a moment. Next slide, please. So here you can see we have a total of 13 executive-level leaders. All of us have clearly identified as successor. We also have a total of 34 principals this year and 38 assistant principals. That principal pipeline that I was referring to is our KC Plus Resident Program. Currently, we have eight former-plus residents that are serving as assistant principals. We also have two current KC Plus residents, so they're in their second year of the residency. And, and this is just a time for those leaders to serve in the capacity of, similar to an assistant principal, however, they don't have the rights to do evaluation of staff. They can do walkthroughs, they can provide feedback, they can provide professional development. And this, and they sit in on the leadership planning and the meetings. And so they're being prepared then to move into an assistant principal role while they're in that two-year residency. And for those who demonstrate strong capacity within that first year, oftentimes when, when the opportunity arises, we will move them into an assistant principal role for that second year. And you can see we've done that with two residents this year. Also, we have eight-plus residents that are currently in the pipeline in that first year of residency in preparation. Next slide, please. So this gets to our Leadership Continuity Plan, and there are three components of the plan. The first is around interim continuity, that emergency or that short-term planning. And this is to make sure that in the case of a superintendent absence, whether that be short-term or long-term, there are two executives that are ready to step in that role to fill in on an interim, on an interim basis. Then also, we have staff assessment and development, and that's looking at our leadership capacity, not only for interim roles, but long-term roles. And there are multiple leaders in our district that are being prepared for expanded leadership roles at the building level as well as district level. And then there at the bottom, you see the criteria for selection, because we want to make sure that our, our leaders are prepared to move into these roles that they're, that they're aspiring to move into. So we, we're looking at evaluations, at least for the last two years. They should be good evaluations that demonstrate a proficiency level for, for that particular role they're currently holding. Also, educational accomplishments, making sure they have the appropriate credentials and educational background for the role that they're aspiring to as well. Looking at their tenure in those roles, how long have they held those positions with KCPs? And then also, just a summary of that, of their experience and their performance record. We want to know that they have done a good job in the roles that they've held, and they've demonstrated a capacity then to move to that next level of leadership. Next slide, please. So in order to do that, as I've stated earlier, we have clear second-in-commands for every department. And these people, once again, provide leadership day-to-day within the department, and they're ready to step in an absence. For example, in last fall, I was out for a brief time on FMLA, and my successor, or my second-in-command was able to continue the work of Human Resources without us missing a beat. And that's what we want for every department, that if someone cannot be there for whatever reason, there is someone that can step in and help fill that role, whether that be long or short term. And then for, we also hold regular executive team meetings or what we would call our cabinet meetings. Prior to COVID-19, we held these meetings once a month, so cabinet-level members meet weekly. But we would include our executive team and second-in-command leaders once a month in those meetings. And I'll say, this is rare for school systems. There are a lot of school districts where people never have an opportunity to send it, sit in at the cabinet level and hear that level of discussion and planning for a school system. But here in KCPs, when Dr. Bedell came, he instituted including second-in-commands at least once a month. Since COVID, we knew that we were disconnected and it was going to be imperative that we touch bases more regularly, that we had clear communication happening, that everyone would be on the same page and understand what we were working toward, what those goals were. And so we began including executive leaders and second-in-command leaders every week. And so we've continued that, we've not discontinued that at this point. So throughout this entire time, from the middle of March until now, all executive team members and second-in-command leaders are part of the weekly cabinet meetings. And so they are all a part of the, the decision-making that happens for this school district. And that is invaluable experience for anyone who is wanting to move into the executive role ranks. Next slide, please. Then once again, expanded training and team building. Every year, we have our annual leadership retreat, and we include our executive members and second-in-commands in those retreats so that they're hearing, they're part of our planning hearing about our initiatives for the year, our setting, helping us set goals for the year. That will be happening this fall. And because we want, we are an equity-focused school system, much of our time there will be focused on equity, because we know that it's important that as leaders, we all champion equity in our day-to-day work and in our departments. And how can you champion something that you may not truly understand or don't believe in? So we want to make sure that we are providing this training for all of our leaders, so then that we go back and we do our work, looking through the lens of equity and making sure that we're making decisions that are equitable as far as the day-to-day occurrences in each department. Then as far as professional development opportunities, I think KCPs provides lots of learning opportunities for our employees and our leaders, be that local or national. There are many conferences that we're a part of that we're able to attend to help sharpen us, whether that's specific to our department roles or a larger conference that will help us expand in our leadership capacity. And so this is a, another, to me, feature or characteristic of KCPs that we should be very proud of. And then we also, a couple of years ago, instituted Tier Two leaders. And these are our second-in-command leaders who serve as department, department directors, managers, and supervisors. And here, there's interdepartmental communication and conversation happening so that we're, so that we're understanding across the district what our initiatives are, what our goals are, and everybody has an understanding of how that work intersects. And it's really important for those leaders to come together to have those conversations, because many of these leaders are engaging in that day-to-day work in every department. And so we have found that those, those meetings have been valuable. We did briefly discontinue them when COVID started, but we are about to resume those meetings shortly. And so that's another feature of our succession planning. Next slide, please. We're also continuing our Focus Thursday, Friday trainings. And we've, I've talked about this before. This is training for all leaders in our system. Cabinet level, executive team, second-in-command, director, supervisor, anyone who supervises another employee in this district must attend these mandatory trainings. In past years, they've been very compliance-based information that we needed to share. This year, once again, our focus is really on equity. And so there's going to be four of those seven sessions that are devoted to implicit bias training as well as educational equity series. And so Dr. Davis will be leading all leaders in our district in this training. And once again, we're expecting for all the leaders then to go back and turnkey this in their department and lead the work in their department through a lens of equity, so that we began to see equity across our system and not just one isolated department that's responsible for equity, but all of us responsible for equity within our respective roles and our respective work in our departments. Then our assistant principals. There was a day and a time where assistant principals did not get to attend any onsite professional development that was designated only for the principals. And in the last few years, that has changed. We have designated assistant principals meetings that mirror what our principals receive. This is led by our school leadership team. And so once again, our assistant principals are hearing the same information that our principals are hearing, and they're, they're also being prepared to move into that principal role if necessary. Okay, next slide, please. Here is the information or the data around our KC Plus program. And what I'm really proud about is that this is not just a principal pipeline program that we started, and we have nothing to show for it. As you can see here, year after year, you can see the number of residents that we've had in each year, but then you also can see the number that we've actually hired into our assistant principal and principal roles. And there was a time where it was really challenging to find effective and good-fit candidates for our schools. I feel like now what we are seeing through this principal pipeline program, we're seeing people who are coming with the right credentials, strong instructional background, but also have the mindset and are culturally competent and ready to lead in an urban school system. So this has been invaluable for us to continue this partnership with UMKC through the KC Plus program. And then we've also added last year, if you remember, the Executive Leadership Academy. That began, led by our academic division. And this program is simply moving beyond the principal ranks and looking at preparing leaders then for that director level, our assistant superintendent role in our school system, because we know that that's going to be very important as well, having some succession there, making sure that leaders are ready to step in so that no balls are dropped when and if changes occur. So that is, we'll be continuing this year as well. Next slide, please. And here, I just wanted to show you some three-year data. This is our folks who are currently in administrative roles, and these are all internal promotions. So the very first column, there is promotions from if, if someone who may have been a teacher or an instructional coach or a resident, and they're currently in the assistant principal role. There are 14 that are currently in an assistant principal role. There are 12 who have been promoted from assistant principal to principal over the last three years. And then that very last column, and I cannot see it. I'm going to have to move. There we go. Promotion from principal to a central office director-level leadership role, there are two. So you can see that there have been some internal promotions as we work to, to strengthen our leaders and to build capacity in them as they prepare and aspire to other roles. We're seeing really positive results in terms of those leaders then move, successfully moving into those new positions. Next slide, please. Here you have, I'm sharing some school leadership three-year retention data. We often focus a lot of attention on our teacher retention, but here you can see over the last three years, what that three-year retention data looks like. There, I'm, I've broken it down by specific positions. So you're seeing elementary AP, elementary principal, middle school AP, middle school principal, and so on. And you can see for, for each year, the number of separations. And I've provided that separation reason or code, you, you know what happened in those cases? The number of promotions in that given year and the number of staff that returned. So you can see in school year 18, we had a 90% retention rate. In school year 19, we dipped slightly and had a 77% retention rate. And then this past school year, school year 20, we ended with an 86% retention rate. These are, this is just for all of our APs and our principals. Next slide. Questions?
Um, questions from my colleagues?
So I'll jump in. No, no questions, per se, just a bit of another kudos for Dr. Collier. So really, like, smooth, succinct. I totally get it. But above and beyond just the presentation piece of this, to me, and, and I hope, I hope my colleagues see this and, and, and agree with it. There's such a huge, a huge component of leadership that's wrapped around talent development, management, and creating opportunities for people to grow in their careers, being transparent about those opportunities and what it takes for them to move from one level to the next. And it, for me, I walk away from these sort of presentations on this topic feeling really, really confident and comfortable with the district's leadership to, to put those programs in place and allow people those opportunities to grow. And so I, I think talent management is probably the, if not one of, the most important thing that a leader can do. Right? And so thank you for, for the, the intentionality that's baked into this. And I loved to hear, and I know it's not just you saying the words, but I love to hear equity being talked about across every single role, right? Like, in the business world, we talk about everyone's job is to be a salesperson. Right? I don't care if you're the administrative assistant answering the phone, or if you're the CEO, everyone is, you know, in a, in a profit-generating business like that. Everyone's job is to sell. And in this world, right, equity should be everyone's responsibility. And so I really, really appreciate that being sort of baked into the way in which we're thinking about the talent side of this.
Absolutely. And I have the opportunity to serve on that equity steering team with Dr. Davis. So I think he and I partnering together with a lot of this has really been helpful, especially as we provide opportunities for training that he's going to be doing this year, not only with our leadership, but with also our staff members.
Other questions, Mr. Abarka?
Yeah, and I, I obviously want to echo Nate's mentioning of the equity component, right? Making sure that our, our administrators at every level look like what our students and families look like. But I guess my question is around kind of the incentive to encourage folks to take these next steps, because I think sometimes people don't always recognize the talent in themselves and what opportunities exist there that we're kind of encouraging, right? Right? I know, I mean, the very intentional, you know, recommendations from folks, but do we also offer some financial incentives? Do we offer incentives from the benefit side to help folks navigate the educational components that may come with some of this, this work? You know, not every good teacher is a good administrator, but how do we make those next steps? So that's one question, and I'll, I'll let you answer that one before I go to the next one.
Okay, so, so that's along the lines of tuition reimbursement. And we get questions about that regularly. It's something that we have talked about trying to work on in our district. We don't currently offer that. However, we do provide, once again, going back to that professional development, those opportunities, we provide those amply for all of our employees. And so in most departments, there aren't any staff members, whether that's in a school or in a central office department, that doesn't have an opportunity to attend some type of professional development or conference. And in fact, we're encouraged to, Dr. Bedell encourages us to as leaders, but he also tells us to make sure that the people in our department have an opportunity to engage in some of those same or similar professional development opportunities so that they can grow and then potentially move into that next level of leadership. But you're right, tuition reimbursement is something that we have looked at trying to reinstate, and we'd like to do that. We just have to figure out financially how to make that happen for our, for our community.
Yeah, I, I had the privilege of serving on a previous school board that was much smaller, that offered tuition reimbursement. And obviously, that's a lot easier to do when you, you have probably 100 teachers versus what we have. So I would definitely be supportive of something along those lines as we identify, sorry, Linda, as we try and identify those priorities. The other question I have is, what are we doing to make sure folks stay here as they transition, right? I hear a lot of times, somebody will say, oh, he transitioned out because he wanted to be a principal, and there's just not a pathway for them. So are there breakaways that maybe you have in discussions as people are looking to leave that we know these folks maybe have the raw potential, but just aren't there yet, but could be there in other districts, especially when we talk about minority employees specifically, right? I don't want to get to a point where we're training everyone up, and then they jump to Liberty or at least Summit and are promoted quickly when we could be keeping that talent here. So what are we doing to help mitigate those things?
Well, I think, so it's sort of tricky, because when you look at years where you have very low turnover, which is a great thing, like, like, we don't want a lot of turnover. When we have a lot, that's, that's a reason for concern. But when you don't have turnover also, then that limits also opportunities for those. then that limits also opportunities for those that are within the organization then to move into that role. And sometimes people just don't want to wait for that position to open. But once again, within our departments, we're always looking to see, and I believe this is happening at the school level as well, those folks who would be a good fit or had, or demonstrating capacity or competencies for that next level of leadership and providing opportunities for them to leave. Because you don't have to be, you don't have to have a specific title in order to be able to lead and have responsibility and leadership. And so as a principal, I expect for the principals to give teachers that opportunity to lead and have voice so that they prepare. And the same thing should be happening in the district office. For example, opportunities like tonight, I, I wanted Monica to be here because she's doing great work in this area. And so giving her that experience to present here at the board meeting is invaluable. But even beyond this, other opportunities for our leaders to step out and get experience leading is important. Once again, you don't have to have the title to do that, but we have, we do have to be intentional about opening this up so that more of our leaders have a chance to practice and that their leadership abilities and skills.
Jennifer, if I could jump into, we're always looking and giving opportunities to our staff members that are looking for opportunities. So for example, I utilize my teacher recruitment team. I know I've got a couple of men on there that are really looking towards the principal pipeline. So I send them out and I have them represent us at the teacher males of color conference. I've also sent them over to St. Louis. I've also picked up a couple of other teachers that I know are looking for leadership capacity. And I, and I'm aware of that. So when I know these opportunities come up, I, I'm like, Jennifer, can we send them out? Can we get them the experience? And so we try to do that as much as possible when we know, so we don't lose them, try to feed them, so we don't lose them.
Additional questions from other board members? All right, thank you, Dr. Collier.
Right, part two.
All right, moving to the next part. All right, so this is policy 4.9, board policy 4.9. Once again, pillars, this is strategic priority seven, and this is really looking at our workforce, making sure that we're attracting, developing and retaining a diverse and effective workforce. Next slide please. So when we think about this, we want to make sure that listed there is our interpretation of what this means. And of course, appropriately certified is, is very important because DESI requires that of us and we want to make sure that we're doing that. But there are other competencies that we're looking for outside of just being certified. There are basic things that we would expect of any teacher organization, classroom management and instruction. But in KCPS in particular, we also want to make sure that we have trauma sensitive teachers, those who understand the traumas that many students bring to the classroom and not only understand it, but have strategies to be able to address and to support our, our students. Also that cultural competency that's, that's required. And, and experience in the urban setting is really important because a lot of times if people understand that experience, they're able to relate to our students. And you don't always have to have lived it, but it is valuable when you have lived it and you have a, an understanding of what that looks like and feels like for children. So some of that comes through lived experience and then also some of that will come through trainings that we provide as, as we work to get higher and train people to have the right mindset as they work with the students that we serve. And then just getting down to that fundamental belief, because your belief will guide your practice. What you really believe will be demonstrated. And so it's so important that our, the teachers and staff members that we hire have the right belief about our children in our community. So that's the way we interpret this particular policy. Next slide please. This particular policy, there are quite a few more key performance indicators that we look at. They are the certification and education level of our classroom teachers, and I'm going to cover all this in the presentation this evening. Also teachers' years of experience, or the number of years they've actually worked in the field of education, not necessarily here in KCPS, but in education. And then the number of years of experience, I'm sorry, that first one is here in KCPS. The second is years of experience in the education field. Then followed by our demographic data and, and Dr. Davis spoke very well to this the last time we presented. But we're back to this again because we know how important it is to have teacher diversity, having the percentage of students of color that we have in this district and what the research tells us about teachers of color and the need for that, it is definitely a goal of ours. So we continue working to grow our teacher of color population. Also gender, looking at that as well. And then our recruitment data. What are we doing to recruit our teachers and what kind of results are we having as a, as a result of our recruitment efforts? Also retention rate data, because it's one thing to recruit staff, it's another thing to hold on to that staff. Getting to the question, Mr. Barker, that you asked around retaining those staff members after we've invested in them and trained them. We want to make sure we're holding on to our high quality, highly effective staff members. And then finally, our vacancy rate. Next slide please. So I always like to include a little research because I don't think that the presentation should just be what I think, it's Jennifer Collier. I think my, my opinions are valuable, however, I also want to ground it in some research. And so the Rand Corporation conducted a study in 2019 and Isaac Oprah in particular stated, teachers matter more to student achievement than any other aspect of schooling. Among school-related factors, teachers matter most. When it comes to student performance on reading and math tests, teachers are estimated to have two to three times the effect of any other school factor, including services, facilities and even leadership. So once again, we know how valuable that classroom teacher is. They are the person that has the greatest potential for impact on students, greater than any other. And so we have to make sure that we are recruiting the right people, hiring the right people and then training them so that they're equipped and can continue in this work. Next slide please. So here, you can see are the number of teachers for this year, and this number fluctuates depending on staff that stay with us or additional FTE that are added. At this point, we have 1,027 teachers. You can see that two of them are, have professional certificates working in our CTE department. And the lion's share of our teachers hold the bachelor's degree, but you, as you'll notice, quite a few of our teachers also hold the master's degree. And so one of the things that we find is that a lot of teachers begin working on that master level work almost as soon as they begin as a teacher here in KCPS. And so you can see those percentages there, how that falls out. If you look at that bottom graph there, it lets you know that 996 of our teachers are appropriately certified. And that puts us at 97%. The same time last year, we were actually at 95%, which DESI allows. But I'm really excited that this year we are slightly higher at 97%. And some of those that are still outstanding are those with out of state certificates. So we're just waiting at this point for DESI to continue processing. They're processing a little slower this year, maybe due to COVID. But there, all of these are in the process of being converted over to Missouri certificates. And then there are also 22 that are outstanding renewals, those who currently hold certificates that need to be renewed or upgraded or reactivated. And those are also processing at this point with DESI. Next slide please. Here we're getting into the classroom teacher, years of experience in KCPS. So it's important when you look at these numbers, that you're not thinking just years of experience in education. Because there could be teachers that are sitting in that zero to five year category that have come to us with three years, five years, 10 years of classroom teacher experience, but they're within their first five years with us. So at this point, you can see that largest group is at 60%, which is slightly lower than what we've had in past years. So we have a little more educational experience right now in our district. But I also want to call your attention to that, that second, the last column, that second row at 14.5%. As you'll notice, as you look across, there has been an increase in that area, which is an indication to us that we are retaining teachers with experience at a higher rate than what we have in the past, and that is exciting news for us. You all have heard Ms. Quinley and I talk about our salary schedule and the work that we've done there in partnership with our union. And we did a lot of work in, on our schedule to increase starting pay, but also looking at those years of experience, improving other areas of the schedule where before we were almost incentivizing people to leave us because we were being completely outpaced in some, in some of the areas of our schedule by other districts. And they could go somewhere else and make more and engage in the same work. So we've worked to improve that. But we're excited to see that we have had a slight increase there of teachers that are remaining or having that number of years of experience with us within that six to 10-year rank. Next slide please. Here, now we're looking at years of experience in the classroom. And so these are our folks who, you can see that largest group is 46%. Those are, these are teachers who are new to education within their first zero to five years. And once again, that's our largest percentage. The only other area where I saw a slight difference or a difference that stood out would have been in that 16 to 20 years at 9%. And I think some of that has to do with our retirement data. So once again, this is experience in the classroom, the largest number of teachers we have in the district have the fewest number of years of experience. And that is slightly up from years past. Next slide please. So here we have the total new teachers hired for this school year at 172. And then you can also see those that are new to the teaching profession. There are, there are 79 teachers that joined us this year that are brand new to education. So you can see that they make up, those that are actually brand new to education make up that 46%. The orange, the orange part of the pie chart, whereas those that are new to KCPS that are coming to us with experience are 54% of that pie chart. So we, the largest group of teachers that are, that we've hired in this year are those with experience. Next slide please. Then here you can see the universities where we are getting the highest results. That first chart there shows you our teachers that are actually new to the profession. And UMKC is our university where we're getting most of our teachers. I have noticed that we are having more and more student teachers come to us from UMKC, which is a great thing. And many of those teachers are staying with us. So that has been very helpful for us. At 15 teachers there, and then the numbers decrease as you go on. But I do want to point out that six of our new hires came from HBCUs as we really work to increase our teacher of color ranks. We did hire in six teachers from those recruitment efforts. And then on that second chart that you see there, this is just highest yield universities in general for all of our new hires. Once again, University of Missouri, Kansas City is sitting at the top. And then I was really happy to see the University of Central Missouri, because that's one of the universities, universities that we are working to build relationships with and we're working to get student teachers from that university in to our school system as well. So that's, those are, that's our data around our highest yield universities. Next slide. So getting now into the value of teacher diversity. This is Linda Darling-Hammon. She's the CEO of the Learning Policy Institute. In her research, she states, while white students also benefit by learning from teachers of color, the impact is especially significant for students of color who have the highest test scores, I'm sorry, who have higher test scores, are more likely to graduate high school and more likely to succeed in college when they have had teachers of color who serve as role models and support their attachment to school and learning. Students with racially diverse teachers also have fewer unexcused absences and are less likely to be chronically absent. So clearly we can see the value and importance of students of color. I'm sorry, my light went off in my office. Okay, next slide, Joe. Thank you. So here, here you can see our, our numbers laid out for us around our student demographics. And you can see that the, the largest population for our students are, are, are black students at 54%, followed by our Hispanic students at 28%. But then when you look over on the teacher ethnicity side, and this is not new data, this was shared just a month ago. You can see that the majority of our teachers are white at 62%, then followed by 27% black and 6.5% Latinx. And so it's, one of the areas that we're looking at very closely is our Latinx population, because they are our fastest growing student demographic. And what we saw here for this particular population, we did not have a decline, but we didn't have an increase in our Latinx teachers. And so that's the area that we're going to focus in more specifically this year. We did have a very small increase of black teachers this year. So that very next slide, you'll see what some of that data looks like. This shows you over the last five years where we were sitting in terms of our students of color and our teachers of color. So we're remaining right at 90% for our students of color. But you can see this year, we did have an increase to 38%, not a huge increase, but it was a slight uptick, which was promising for us. But once again, we must continue to work in this area. As I was sharing this information earlier with our larger executive team, this is quite a challenge for us, because when you look at the broader context in education, the field of education, the schools of education, there are fewer students even going into schools of education at all. And then even fewer of those candidates are candidates of color. And so what it says to me is that while traditional recruitment is very important, and we're going to talk about that, it's important for us to continue, it will be imperative for us and other urban districts to really rely on the more non-traditional pathways to the classroom and into education through some of the partnerships that, that we've been working on, that we'll talk about. Also our Grow Your Own, it's going to be important that we focus in on those areas as well and not just rely on our schools of education, because you can't get something that doesn't exist. And right now, teachers of color are not highly represented in, in schools of education across the country. So when you look at our teacher demographic, teachers of color data, we're at 38%. You can see the state of Missouri, they had a slight decline. They were at 9% last year. They are now at 6.9%. So teachers of color within the state of Missouri and then the United States at 20%. So while we are not where we want to be, we are still outpacing the state and the nation. And so once again, we'll continue to work in that area, because once again, our students of color at 90%. And it's so important for students to see a reflection of themselves. When they can see that classroom teacher that looks like them, or at least someone in their building, another teacher that looks like them, how powerful that is for children. And it, it just says to them implicitly, I can be that, I can do that. Because when you see it, then it becomes something that you view as possible for yourself. So it's imperative that we increase the ranks there. And also the research talks about not only the benefits for children of color, but everyone, all children benefit from teachers of color. And so we definitely want to continue to work in that area. Next slide please. So here, looking at our student teacher demographic data around gender, the majority of our students, this is similar to last year's data, almost exactly, 51% are male and 49% female, whereas 78% of our teachers are female and 22% male. And as I was looking at the research around this, it was saying that this gender data is not as significantly important as the ethnicity. However, it is important for, it said in particular, those males of color, black males, Latinx males to see teachers, male teachers that look like them. And so that's another area that we want to continue to work in, having males represented in our schools so that our young men see a reflection of themselves as well in terms of gender. Next slide please. Okay, this is just a comparison to the state and this just simply will just show you that our data pretty much mirrors that of the state in terms of male and female. We aren't very different. But once again, we want to continue to work and build our, our male teacher ranks. Next slide. So getting now into retention, I talked a little bit about earlier how it's important to recruit and we're going to go into that more of that in just a moment, but we don't want to have that bucket with a hole in it. So we do all this recruitment efforts, we, they come in and then they're out the door, because that doesn't benefit anyone. And so Richard Ingersoll, in a interview that he did with National Public Radio, and it was, it was an article entitled revolving door of teachers. He states, "One of the main factors is the issue of voice and having say and being able to have input into the key decisions in the building that affect a teacher's job. This is something that is a hallmark of professions. It's something that teachers usually have very little of, but it does vary across schools and is very highly correlated with the decision whether to stay or leave. And so as we continue, we consider our teacher retention. Once again, we want to give them opportunities, as we were saying earlier, to lead and to have voice in their work. And I believe that we are engaging in that at the school level in so many ways with some of the teams that we've instituted, the professional learning communities and other teams that we have at the school site where teachers are highly engaged in decision-making for their schools. Next slide please. So this here gets into our four-year trend data. So you can see for last school year- So you can see for last school year, we had a thousand fifty-nine teachers. We did have two-hundred-twenty of them depart this year, which put us at a retention rate of seventy-nine percent. So we did have a slight decrease from where we were the last couple of years. So it's something that we want to focus on. And you can see the further breakdown, I'm not sure if you all can see it very well. But twenty-three of those were due to retirement, one-hundred-sixty-nine of those were due to resignation. And that was up a little bit from the previous year, and then twenty-eight of those were non-renewals. Next slide, please. So this takes us to the exit interview data. So when we look at those resignations, we had a total of two-hundred-twenty teachers to exit. And then of the respondents for teachers, oh, this is teacher data only, one-hundred-seventy-seven of them did respond. And so these are the type, top five reasons that are listed on the right side of the screen. And these were identified by our survey, but also the resignation letters that came in. The very top reason was anxiety and mental stress. And when we dig into that data, it points directly to concerns regarding student behavior and feeling supported by administrators. And often those two, those two things are tied together. Because when a student misbehaves and they come right back to the classroom. In the letters that we've received, the teachers talk about not feeling supported because the, the child has returned. However, we know that some of our goals for the school system is to alleviate or to decrease our suspension rate. So there's going to be a lot of work that's going to need to happen to reconcile those two positions. Making sure that our teachers understand why our students need to be there. And training them to de, help de-escalate behaviors and leveraging and utilizing our, our staff. That have been trained in that work to help so that our teachers feel the support that they need. Because we cannot just continue to suspend our children. We know that when they're not at school, they don't learn and they don't benefit from suspension. But at the same time, we also want to make sure that our teachers are feeling supported. So there are things that we're going to have to do moving forward to make sure that we take off of some of the pressure from the teachers around. A student behavior and helping them, one, learn how to de-escalate and deal with those behaviors. But also making sure that the staff that we have that are trained also provide those interventions. That would relieve the classroom teacher of some of that as well. Then the second top reason was the family considerations. The third was retirement. The fourth was partner spouse relocation. And the very last was unhappy with management. And I'll have to say that last one, I think tied right back up to that very first. Those were, we heard some of the same reoccurring themes around those who were wanting to leave. Being unhappy with management, not feeling supported, feeling anxiety and stressed and not able to continue in their teaching role. Next slide, please. So when we don't retain teachers, that creates a burden for the school system. And it creates a, a great deal of work that we have to do in order to now go and fill those vacancies. So it's not a fun thing to have that turnover. And as much as possible, we want to retain those teachers that have the capacity to work in this school system. But this research, Education Commission of the States in twenty-nineteen, this says districts across the country are facing severe shortages of teachers. Not anything new, especially in certain subjects, math, science, special education, career and technical education. And bilingual education. And in specific schools, those that are underperforming, those that are serving students in urban or rural areas. Or low-income communities and those serving high percentages of students of color. So this is where we typically see these teacher shortages. And it impacts our children in districts just like ours. So that's even more attention and work that we have to give to that retention effort. So that we don't put ourselves in a position where we won't have certified and highly qualified teachers to educate our children. Next slide, please. So here's our start of school teacher vacancy data. We are really proud of this work. And, and just a moment, Monica's going to talk more about in depth what we've been doing and what we're going to do. But as you can see, over the last three years, we've had a continued decrease in the number of vacancies. This school year, we started, yesterday was our first day of school, we started with three vacancies. And I'm really excited that they were not in some of our hard-to-fill areas. And so our goal is to hit zero. But we're, we're certainly just proud of this work to be at three. When, I, I can tell you, when I came into HR, HR about five, six years ago. We were, we had vacancies more at fifty and sixty vacancies to start the school year. And that's not uncommon. I was just having a conversation with someone from an urban district and they were saying that, that this year, they're, right now, they're starting with about sixty vacancies. And when I heard that, I thought to myself, that's exactly where KCPS used to be. And now we're at a place where we're filling our vacancies. And there are a lot of strategies that we engage in, in order to do that. And so I'm going to take us to the next slide really quickly. So what are we doing in response to this recruitment and retention data? And we're going to jump into that right now. Monica, I'm going to hand it over to you. Next slide, please.
All right, thanks, Jennifer. So in looking at our two models that we'll be looking at today, traditional recruitment. We were able to go to thirty-eight universities and career fairs in two thousand nineteen, twenty, before COVID hit us. And in utilizing, we looked at our teacher recruitment team members, we took them with us. We also used our vice principals, we used our principals. And then we also reached out to any other staff members that would maybe have that university affiliation. So that they could go with us and represent the district. One of the things that we worked with IT on this year and did something a little creatively. Is that we developed a QR code. And this QR code, the students would simply walk up to our table. They'd get out their cell phones, they'd go to their camera, they'd take a picture of, they'd just actually hover over our QR code. And it would take them straight to a Google Drive where they could input their data, which was their name. Their certification, their graduation date. And then that would go directly and upload to a Google Drive for us. So our principals, this all was done in real time. So if our principals had a vacancy, they could go on to the principal's drive and pull up and look for a math candidate. Or a science teacher and have all their information that they needed right there available to them to reach out to immediately. One of the things we did start noticing when we were using our, our digital sign-in. We had other districts start coming up to our table and asking, you know, well, what's this QR code for? And how does this work and what's this all about? And within the next few university visits, we started seeing other districts relying on a digital sign-in. And doing things like that. So mimicking us and kind of picking up on our creativeness and our innovative thinking, I guess you could say. So in order to meet our student demographics, we're always looking at our partnerships with our HBCUs. As well as our Latinx partnerships. We focused heavily on Langston, University of Pine Bluff, Paris Stowe and Lincoln Universities. Once again, we utilized our alumni affiliations to go and help us recruit those at those universities. As well as we used Allison Heil and her team to look at our T-Sell Career Fair. And as well as our multilingual Career Fair. University of Puerto Rico, that was actually our last career fair that we were able to attend in person. As the next day, we were actually shut down and went into our COVID protocol. So in looking at that, we then moved into our virtual recruitment late spring. And during our virtual recruitment, all of our universities started sending us their digital resume packets. So we were able to get those into our principals' hands. And they could look through and filter and see which one of the candidates that they wanted to reach out to. And see about the needs that they had. Also candidates in the past, they weren't really good about utilizing their university's digital platform, which is Handshake. And so therefore, we didn't really, I mean, we used Handshake, but we didn't really rely on that heavily. Well, once we went to the virtual recruitment, we started using Handshake more. As the recruits started using Handshake a lot more. So we were able to reach out and, and connect with our students and our recruits that way. Currently, to date, we have thirty virtual recruitment fairs that we are confirmed to attend. We actually have one coming up in two weeks. So, it, so we hit the ground running this year virtually. And thinking about that, one of the strong, one of our strong suits that we really feel like is meeting our recruits face to face. Because we feel like the passion that we have for our district and for our students really shines through. Not only do we feel like that, but we've been told that from our recruits. They, they can tell and they tell us that, you know, that you, you obviously love your district and you obviously love what you do and who you work for. So thinking along those lines, we want to make sure when we're looking at virtual recruitment, are we getting that across to our candidates? Are we making that connection with them? So knowing that our teachers are building their recruitment classrooms, are building their classrooms and their Bitmoji classrooms. We feel like we wanted to try and build a Bitmoji recruitment classroom in order to connect with our recruits. So this is what our, this is what our recruitment classroom looks like. So when recruits go on, if they hover over myself or over Jackie. And it takes them to a page that will let them know about myself or Jackie, how to connect with us and how we can help. One of the pieces also that a lot of recruits ask us about is housing. How do we do housing? Is there any opportunities? So if they hover and click on to the plant, thank you, Joe. This is a slide that gives them some housing options from a property management teams that have reached out to us. Regarding housing opportunities that they have available. And as, as we continue to work with property management teams, we'll continue to add to this. If they go to the hard work pays off, our salary schedule pops up. Recruits always want to know about our salary schedule and we're very proud of our salary schedule this year. I know Linda and our team worked very hard to increase our salary schedules. So we want to make sure our recruits understand what the starting pay is and where they would fall. And to go along with our salary schedule, recruits always want to know about benefits. So if you go to the hand sanitizer, insurance benefits. This is a one-page stop that just gives them some information about benefits that they can get at a glance. And then in the past, we've been able to share what a classroom looks like. So we wanted them to get an idea, so we gave them the book. So on the top bookshelf, if they click that one. You gotta be really intentional, Joe. And it's still, if they click on the top bookshelf or the bottom, how about the pillow? Try the pillow. The pillow actually is an ELA and reading from our KCPS homeroom. So they'll be able to view an ELA lesson. And then the top bookshelf is going to be a science lesson and the bottom book is a math lesson. So as I said, everything in here is attached to something that recruits always want to know about. And they're always asking about. And we also wanted to make sure that they understand that it's, you know, it's hard work in our district, but it's a lot of fun. So our videos are about our convocation. Our videos are about our summer fest and the fun things that we have going on here in KCPS. So we're pretty excited for this page. It'll be, the link will be tagged to our signature lines, it'll be on our website. It'll be sent out when we visit with recruits during our virtual fairs. We're also working with Andrea Cook just in order to find other ways and means to get it out and get it in our recruits' hands. Okay, next slide. In the past, we've hosted Experience KCPS. So this year, we're going to have to be looking at how we're going to do that virtually. We've already held an August presentation for our Northwest students. We did an ELL presentation with Allison Heil and Dana Carter and myself. We had great reviews from the Northwest students on that. But we'll also host an October Experience with our Northwest students. As well as doing a November Experience for our Lincoln University students and our University of Missouri students. And then in December, we'll invite all of our colleges and universities. Reach out to all of those and invite them to a December Experience KCPS. And then Teachers Like Me will be reaching out to them in December and hosting an Experience KCPS for them. And I'll speak a little bit more to the teachers like me in our next slide. One of the ways of doing a virtual KCPS that we feel like is an advantage. Is that students will be able to really tag in and get more students possibly to attend. Because they'll be able to not worry about the travel, they'll be able to attend right from their home site. So we'll be excited to see how our efforts go with our virtual KCPS. Next slide, thank you. In February of twenty twenty, we held our KCPS Job Fair. We had a hundred and forty-two attendees with interviews. Out of those hundred and forty-two, our principals felt like we had sixty-five candidates that were worth receiving a blue card. These candidates then went on to receive a second interview with our curriculum and instruction team. Out of those sixty-five candidates, we were able to sign thirty-two contracts to Teach for KCPS. Next slide, thank you. So key partnerships, our partnerships are key in helping us fill our vacancies. We work very closely with Teach for America. This year, we were able to hire twenty-one candidates from Teach for America. Six of those were in hard-to-fill areas. Kansas City Teacher Residency, we were able to hire ten, with three of those being in hard-to-fill areas. And five new residents will come on board this year and then fill in next year as five new hires. The MU Fellows Program is a program in which MU offers a master's degree in curriculum and instruction at half the cost. So we have one teacher at Phillips that is taking advantage of this program. And then we always look at our student teachers and our student, our student counselors. And at this time, we have thirty-two student teachers and counselors working through our district for fall and spring. And then you can see the various universities and colleges that these students and teachers and counselors are representing. I mentioned Teachers Like Me in the previous slide. This is the program that Dr. Trinity Davis has created and is working, working through. She currently has five residents that will be ready for placement as the teacher on record in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. And she has promised me that KCPS gets first dibs on these students. And, and actually, Dr. Davis has already reached out to me. She found a teacher of color that has lost his placement due to low numbers in another state. And so we're working to try to see if we can bring this teacher on board to us this year. So she's going to be a great asset as far as our recruitment goes. Regal is the Regal Scholars Program that we're working with through the Lincoln University. It's a Grow Your Own partnership and Dr. Daryl Davis was a huge component of this. It is where we will give five scholarships for future KCPS teachers in the areas of science and math. And then they will come back and become teachers of record for our district. And then UMKC's Project Accelerate is similar to the Parrot to Pro Program. In which paras continue to work as paras for our district while receiving their education. And they'll graduate with their early childhood degree and be able to serve as teachers of record in classrooms from birth through third grade. Next slide.
All right, thank you, Monica. And just to add on to that Project Accelerate, that is really exciting. I've been in conversation with UMKC for several years now to ask them about a program for paras. Because many of the paras in our school, school system would like to become teachers with their barriers that are in the way of that. One of the largest barriers is the fact that many of them have families and responsibilities. And can't afford to stop work to go through a program and, or even in some cases, pay for the program. And so we've had people reach out wanting to do it and they just can't figure out how to do it and stop work. Well, this particular program, they won't have to do that. And when we look at our para group, about sixty percent of them are people of color. Many of them have graduated right here from KCPS. And so to provide them with that opportunity, it goes back to what I was saying and not relying so much on just schools of education. But also some of those non-traditional routes to the classroom. This would be one of those, helping those who are currently working in our schools, familiar with our communities, familiar with our students. And then helping them then to move into a classroom, I think is going to be invaluable for us. And they're going to pilot that program this fall with a few, and then it'll go full board on next fall. So UMKC has already reached out asking us, for us to look to see if we have some paras that are interested in beginning. So they would be in that program for approximately two years and then be able to move. If they complete everything successfully, all coursework and assessments, then they'd be ready to move into a classroom role. So this next piece is getting into retention strategies. The research shows that one of the most effective retention strategies is pairing teachers with a strong, highly capable mentor teacher. Having that person there just to walk alongside new teachers. Having that person there just to walk alongside new teachers to provide guidance. And just direction, that is invaluable. And so we make it a point every year, our curriculum and instruction team partners with our school principals. To ensure that all of our new teachers have a mentor teacher. And so that's something that we're going to make sure that happens again this year for our new staff. Especially with us being in this environment right now where we're not face-to-face. It's going to be even more important to make those connections and to sort of seal our teachers in with support, reinforcement and support. Then next is the onboarding and the training of staff. That is also very important because as people come in, they need to be well-trained and equipped to take on the responsibilities of their role. Their various roles. And so a lot of this happens through our onboarding and training of staff. If you remember, over the last few years, we have revamped our onboarding a couple of times. And we have infused those topics and those priorities, those areas of training that are a priority for us. Around the social emotional learning and the implicit bias and equity. We did infuse those in. However, this summer, we did have a brief break in our traditional onboarding process because of COVID-19. And so all of our modules went to online videos. And we did not have those pieces in there because we believe that those need to be held live by those trainers. Because that interaction that they have with the trainers and the conversation that they have about these topics are so important. So they were provided to our new teachers through New Teacher Bootcamp. However, other employees that came in this summer have not had that. So we're going to have to loop back around and make sure that they receive this training. But typically, all new staff coming in will receive that this training. But this summer, we had digital learning and platforms training modules that were provided for all of our teachers. And we had lots of our new teachers coming in to sign up for those modules and to take those courses. As they prepared for our virtual learning, our distance learning. And then we also had the New Teacher Bootcamp. We were really excited about that this year. Of course, due to COVID-19, we had to adjust some of that. But we were determined to still do something to help acclimate our new teachers to KCPS. And there, we provided that implicit bias and educational equity training and that social emotional learning training. And I can tell you, those were two very dynamic days. Dr. Davis and Dr. Woodley did a phenomenal job in presenting that to our new teachers. Our new teachers were highly engaged. And really, we had a lot of positive feedback from them around these two areas of training. Also, they were provided the curriculum training, making sure they're familiar with their curriculum. They broke into teams based on their levels of education and their content areas. So that they could dive deep into the curriculum, ask questions and make sure that they're well-informed on the curriculum as well as the digital learning platforms. And then that fourth day was focused on evaluation. It's important for our teachers to understand how their success will be measured. So we wanted to make sure that they fully understood the evaluation process as well as the Tyler system, which is our student information system. Then this year, one of the things we were able to do through our negotiations is to incorporate the Teacher Institute into our regular school calendar. If you remember in the past, teachers would sign up if they wanted to attend. But this year was a part of our calendar. So all of our teachers and instructional staff attended Teacher Institute, which was amazing. And so really great feedback from that as well, our Teacher Institute this year. Then there was a day of principal training. And all of our principals were provided training from various departments in the district. Making sure that they had a clear understanding of what the expectations were for the year from each department. And I can tell you, a big chunk of the time that we spent for HR was around our COVID-19 procedures. So that they could provide guidance to their staff members and understand what procedures needed to be in place. As for the staff members who decided to return and to teach in their classrooms. I've talked already about the Focus Thursday and Friday training for all of our leaders. And once again, we're going to be focusing on COVID-19, but also that implicit bias. And that educational equity will be a focus for four of those sessions. And then the Safe Schools Training is continuing, and this is for all staff members. You can go to the next slide and you'll see the topics that are covered under that Safe Schools Training. Our completion deadline is October 31st. And I can tell you, we are actually at 78% completion rate today, which is well ahead of where we normally are this time of year. So a lot of our staff members have taken advantage of the time that they've had to complete this training. However, everyone will have to have all of the modules completed no later than October 31st. We focused in on those administrative policies that we feel are probably most pertinent to. Our employees' roles and pertinent to their day-to-day work, the ones that the policies that they would need to utilize or refer to most frequently. And so those are listed there. And we made sure that they had a review of those policies and signed off on understanding what's required for each of those. As well as our more compliance-type trainings that are on the other side, understanding child abuse. How to identify it, how to report, when you should report, understanding that everyone in the system is a mandatory reporter. Also, we had modules around coronavirus, understanding how to deal with some of those issues. As that is a new topic for all of us this year. And then just some of the other trainings that are important around FERPA and discipline and youth suicide. We know that's a really important one, identifying the signs. And so that's critically important, especially during this time of COVID, when we don't have those connections as much with our students as we'd like. We want to make sure that our staff is well-trained on how to identify some of the signs of depression and. Characteristics that would could potentially lead to a youth suicide. We want to prevent that from happening to any of our students. And so these are all the topics that we cover for our Safe Schools Training. Next slide, please. And then finally, getting into our more retention strategies. We talked about that competitive compensation package. Over the last few years, we've worked each time, each year we come back, we've worked to improve our schedule to make it more competitive. Because we want to, number one, attract teachers, but we also want to retain them. Many of you have heard about the Cordish-sponsored one-light and two-light apartments that are given out to one teacher each year. And they're able to live in those apartments for two years free of charge. We had our first teacher in an apartment who was selected last year and we'll have another this year. And then we have our annual employee recognition and service award ceremony that happens in the spring. We did not have it this past spring due to COVID-19, but we are looking forward to moving to celebrating this year with our employees. And this is a time for us to celebrate all of our employees. We can't celebrate them all at once, but every five years, employees are invited to attend this ceremony. So they're recognized for their years of service here in Kansas City Public Schools. Within that ceremony, however, we did incorporate what we call the Excellence in Education Awards. And this is really looking at some of our high-performing teachers, classroom teachers. Also looking at our administrators, vice principals and the principal and our professional learning community teams. Awarding our teams for doing the things that they need to do to serve our students in our schools. And so we are able to provide rather large rewards or awards for these folks. Those individual awards were up to $10,000. And this was through a grant that was provided by School Smart KC. And we instituted this in the school year 19. This last year, once again, we did not have them due to COVID-19. But we are intending to proceed with them in this coming year. We also have the Teacher and the Principal of the Year Ceremony each year as well, celebrating the great work of our teachers and our principals. And there are Teachers of the Year that are selected from every school. So every school has representation in this. And so that's really been a highlight for the school year. Also, one of the things that we feel in HR is going to be very important, and actually district-wide, is the addition of that Recruitment and Retention Coach. So the work of recruitment and retention is for everyone. But we know that we need someone that is specifically watching and working with intentionality around retaining our teachers. And so we will be hiring someone into that position very soon. That will be engaging in that work with our teachers, even during this time of COVID, when we're not there. Finding ways to connect teachers to one another and to the district initiatives. And then finally, we're going to be doing each semester some educator appreciation activities. Just reminding our teachers and our educators that they are valued, that we appreciate the work that they engage in day-to-day. And just a time of celebration and acknowledgement of all that they do and all they bring to our school system. So these are some of our retention strategies. And I think this concludes the presentation. I think we're at the point now of questions.
I have a question. We've heard some interesting statistics. Of course, one of the things that interests me as much as anything is the quality of the teachers that we recruit. Because since we have the best students, we want to give the best students the best teachers. Do we keep track of statistics about the ranking or background and quality of the recruits that we're able to hire? For instance, are all of our people in the top one-third of their graduating class? Or do we have similar statistics?
Are they in the top third of their graduating class?
Right, wherever they're going for their teaching training.
I would not say, I don't think we actively track for that. However, you know, there are requirements for all of our teachers and through DESI to have a certain grade point average in order to even qualify for a Missouri certificate. But we don't actively track that where they land in their graduating class.
Do we have any other compare? One of the things that concerns me is that I've heard anecdotally that we pay teachers rather small amounts of money. And so I'm concerned about whether, even though we may not be paying the top salaries in the country or in the region. Whether or not we're attracting the top-quality teachers that are coming on the market each year.
Well, I think for the area that we are serving. Our salary schedule is pretty close to other districts around us. There may be one or two that are grossly outpacing us. But for the most part, we're falling right along the same lines as other school districts in this area. Where you will see the major differences in pay is when you look at large urban districts in other states. In many cases, we do not, we're not able to compete there. So some of our graduates that are coming from other states, we do have a challenge trying to, like, let's take someone coming from Los Angeles. What they offer and pay there is not, can't be compared to what we offer. Number one, cost of living differences are also factored into some of those salaries that are provided. And so where it may look like they're being paid much more in a Los Angeles, it might actually be equivalent to what they are able to, what we would consider livable in Kansas City. So when you compare us to other places, it will look like we're not paying as well. But when we're compared to other districts in this area and across the state, I think we're pretty close. But once again, because we are an urban district, it is something that we want to continue to work on for our school system. Attracting folks that will want to come to work in KCPS. It is something we're looking at to improve.
And Mr. Wasserstrom, I think it's important for me to say this. I'm not necessarily interested in just trying to get the top one-third. When I go out and recruit, I make it very clear to people that, and I've been out recruiting with Monica and Jennifer. And I think it shocked them when I said, look, I'm not looking just to fill vacancies. I want people that actually have the ability to be a fit with this school district. And it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to be in the top one-third of your class. As long as you have the ability to show us that you can relate with our kids, you have the content knowledge, you have the ability to obtain your state certification. And we believe you will be a fit for our school district. I think that's probably the most important criteria that I would be looking at in a candidate. Because there's a lot of people that may have graduated in the top third of their classes and will not be able to survive working with our population. It's just, and my attitude is, I don't want to destroy somebody's future because they came into our system and didn't realize that. It's a much more difficult assignment than in some other systems. But I also don't want to destroy the lives of children. Because we have people in here that may be in the top one-third of their class and cannot convey to our kids in a way where they can receive the information. So I think it's important that we look at all of those variables and we try to get the most well-rounded candidate that will be a fit for our school district.
The other piece I would add there too, Dr. Bedell, thank you, that was really important. What you shared is even around some of the barriers for people of color even becoming certified. Because we have seen folks within our school system that struggle to get through a program and get certification in particular. However, they've like served in a substitute role. And we have found that they were actually very effective with our students. And I'm not going to name the school, but there is one school in particular, a high-performing elementary school. And that principal tells us every year, you are not touching my person. Because, and she will tell us, they have the highest test scores across the district. And it was a person who completed an education program, but then struggled with that certification test. But we're really excited, this year, he passed it. But it took a very long time for that to happen. And we would come in and tell her, we're not going to be able to have him back next year, he's not certified. And she, and she didn't care what we said. She said, you're not removing this person. He is more effective than some of the certified staff members. And so sometimes we have to look at some of the cultural biases in those assessments. And because if he's able to do the job, then clearly, he should have been able to pass the assessment. So what was it that kept him from passing that educator assessment? But he is able to be effective in the classroom where it actually counts. He's doing what we want him to do. He's moving students academically, his students are reading and performing. And that's what we want to see. So if he's able to achieve that, then what was the barrier there that kept him then from passing that assessment? So those are things that we have to look at as well as we consider placement. So I agree, Dr. Bedell, it's hard to just look at where you stand in your graduating class. That's something we can look at, but I don't necessarily think that it's something we should focus heavily on either.
What other questions do we have from board members on this presentation? Mr. Hogan and then Ms. Wolsey?
Nope, Ms. Wolsey's been really quiet and says, Dr. Jones, I'm going to shut up and let them talk first.
Alrighty. Jennifer?
So, you know, you always do such a very thorough job. That's why we don't have a ton of questions. But I want to, I have some key thoughts that I just wanted to convey. I know Dr. Collier and Ms. Landis, she represented the department today. But I think what really resonated for me was that three number. At the beginning of the school year, I remember very clearly as a parent, 60 and 70. You know, no- fill vacancy at the beginning of a school year. And to me, what that three represents is so much hard, hard work of your organ, your group within the organization. But then it's the entire organization. I really want people to understand what a huge deal that is. And how appreciative I am, both as a board member, but as a parent. Because that was not a fun way to start a school year, knowing, oh, wow, my child, we don't have a teacher. So I think that is a tiny representation of all the big pieces of work that you are doing, both on the recruitment side and the retention side. And to me, that's, I really appreciate that. And I really want you to convey to your entire group how big of a deal that is. I think the other part for me too, that I just wanted to say was that key fundamental belief. I don't know how you recruit for that, but I think that is one of the most important things. I think there is some sort of tool that you sometimes use, so if you could talk about that. And then, love, 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 the bitmoji, just think it's so fun and cool. Because I know that's one of the hardest things that you guys, I do think what we do comes through to people when we chat with them. And so how do you represent that in this virtual world? So I think that's a great try. And then the other thing is the paras to the teachers. Gosh, man, that would be huge if we can start to develop that pipeline. So those are my four big thoughts.
Absolutely. So in response to the assessment that we use or the interview tool, we do use the Haberman Star Teacher Assessment, which is designed for urban school systems. There's research that had been done that helped to create that interview protocol that would help leaders identify folks who have authentically have the competency that would be effective or appropriate in urban school system. And having that mindset, it really gets to the mindset of the individual. And so many of our principals have been trained on that tool and we use that to help us with our interviewing and selection. But I would also say, I think it goes back to what Dr. Bedell was saying too. Just, I think we engaged in really authentic recruitment efforts in that we just tell our honest story. I don't think we try to candy-cult things or to present this picture to sort of, you know, get people to come. And then they come and something slightly different than what they thought. We tried to make sure we tell the truth. And I think Dr. Bedell really helped us with that. Because as he said, the very first time he went out to recruit with us, I was just shocked with the things he was sharing as a superintendent. But it was so authentic and real. And he just talked about some of what our teachers might experience, and there's my life. some of what our teachers might experience. And there's, there's my light again. Goes off after a certain time, but he talked about the experiences that, that teachers may have when they come to this system. Things that are commonplace here that some people may not be prepared to deal with and to address. And I think we have to be okay with that. KCPS is not for everybody. But there are some people who are really excited about engaging in this work and taking on that challenge. And they truly believe that all children, our children here in KCPS can achieve. They expect that and they come with those high expectations. So I think it's a number of things that help us in that area. I'm going to turn my light on.
While you're turning on the light, it's also important too. When you have a lot of turnover in your school district, when you have a lot of turnover at the principalship level, or you have a lot of turnover with superintendents and everybody, the agenda continuously changes, that contributes, that contributes to a large amount of people not wanting to stay around because people want to be in an organization where they feel that there's going to be some consistency, where they're going to be able to grow. And that there's opportunities for us to build a true culture and climate. And so I think the other thing that's contributed to us being in this situation where we're starting the school year off with just three vacancies is that there is a lot of positive things that's being said about our school district. And a lot of this recruitment, our teachers do a, I mean, our HR representatives do a phenomenal job. But I tell you, some of these teachers, if they didn't feel that this was a good place to work, there's no way we're starting the school year out with three vacancies. Because those are some of your biggest recruiters, they'll go out and they'll say, listen, I like, we're under something here. And when you see that number of those teachers that are now in the six to 10-year range over the last three years, jump from seven to nine to fourteen percent, that's a sign that we got something good going. Now, we still have to work on retention. Don't get it wrong. My goal is I'd love to be able to try to retain ninety percent of our teachers if we can. And so we believe that there's still work that needs to be done around culture and climate. We saw that with our surveys. And I can assure you, we're going to continue to respond to that so that we can do our part to try to make sure that we can keep as many teachers so that we don't even have to worry about recruiting to the extent that we have to because we're keeping people here.
Dr. Jones, or Ms. Wolsey, was that the end of your questions? Okay, Dr. Jones?
Thank you. And thank you guys again for the presentation. One of the things I was wondering was, what kinds of feedback do you feel like you've been able to do? Or give to like the training programs that churn out the teachers to be, especially with respect to behavior management? I've read that just sort of nationally, that's not something that teachers get a lot of training around. And so just wondering, do you feel like as a district, we've been able to make any or give any kind of feedback to the local schools? And then enhance the sort of the backend training once these folks are hired? I guess, and if you could speak a little bit about like, what percentage of the training that's offered like during the school year after a teacher's in place is actually mandatory versus what's optional? Because then I heard there's some differentiation between which workshops or, or I forget what you call it, the PD is actually required and which is kind of optional. So that's, that's actually two questions I know, but just wondering what you've been finding around those.
So as far as the universities, and Monica, you'll probably be able to speak to some of this too, but I know for, for me, I have a very strong relationship with UMKC. I actually sit on their Strategic Planning School of Education Board. And so they have, they're right now revamping their entire School of Education program. And so I have, and Monica's been a part of this as well, having conversations with them about what we need in our school system. We meet with them regularly to talk about what we should, what we expect to see coming out of an urban education preparation program, which is what UMKC works toward. And so we've had very good conversations and open conversations around the type of training that we'd like to see them provide to pre-service teachers. So they're coming out better prepared to move into our schools, which is another reason why I was really excited to see that we're getting more and more teachers from that university. But for me, that is the one I think I've had most conversations with. Also, we have started some partnerships and conversations with William Jewell. And that's another one that we are able to talk about what we're expecting and what we need. And they, they have not only allowed us to come in to talk to them about what we need, but they have also been reciprocated to us, the opportunities for them to provide professional development and to demonstrate for us some of, some of the trainings that they provide around equity and things like that, and wanting our feedback around what those actually look like. So for me though, I would say those two are the ones that I think I've spoken to most frequently. Monica, do you have universities you've spoken to regularly too?
Yes. So Becky Nason, myself, sat on the Northwest Missouri State University panel in which they revamped their teacher education program and went to a year-long student teaching placement. So we were a part of that and gave feedback to them on what we needed to see happen to improve their students coming into our district. Also, Dr. Bedell, we went down, we took the doctor or Mr. Harrison Neal, and I can't remember a, a teacher with us, and we met with the University of Missouri. We had teachers from every content area that met with us and wanted to know what we needed from them as far as their students coming out and working with our students. And then what, what could they do for us? And how could they help our educational, help us educationally? So those, those have been the two major ones that I've worked with. Lincoln University, Dr. Davis and myself actually have been working very closely with Lincoln University. We're trying to build a nice partnership with Lincoln University. So we've been working, we also, they are offering a para to pro in which they're taking our special education paras and working with them and offering them virtual classes online. And so they can continue to be paras in our classrooms while taking classes. So those are all pieces and universities that we're working with and letting, you know, and us saying, this is what we need them to come out and, and to work in our district and help us.
And I know for the discipline question, we'll get with Becky on that, but I think to your point, Dr. Jones, I'm just brain freeze frozen here, brain frozen here. But we do, we know that we do offer for teachers who are struggling discipline sessions for them. And they are optional. And I think as a district, we got to take a deeper look at how do we make sure that we're offering ongoing required training to help people to be able to understand how, you know, what appropriate discipline looks like and how we can work with our kids. And, and I, and I think that that's something that I'll have to check with Becky on. I just don't have that information for you right now around whether it's mandatory, what's mandatory and what's not off the top of my head.
Other questions? Mr. Bark, I'm sorry. Yes?
Yeah, we, we talked a lot about the recruitment of diverse populations. And I think that's a critical component to make sure our students see people that look like them and their families in these leadership positions. So kudos to that. I, I obviously would love to see more growth there. And I know you all are doing unique and innovative things to do that. So applause there as well. Have we done any tracking on our own students becoming teachers or in the recruitment process of that, right? I mean, because it would seem like we have a lot of black and brown students. How can we create a pipeline that encourages and inspires them to become teachers and administrators in the future? Whether that be creative solutions through our foundation to get them to college, to get them into these programs, and then get them hired on the backend, right? Is that, is that something that we're keeping track of or is it a possibility?
Yeah, it is. And maybe these ladies can speak to it, but we started our Grow Your Own program a couple of years ago. And I think we may have our first two students or so. I don't know. I know we had some that went to UMKC that graduated from the school district that are seniors this year. I know one that was in the education program and was actually working with Link in the after-school program. So we'll probably have our first couple of students that are eligible to, will be eligible to teach, pending that, you know, depending on them meeting all of the requirements that we would love to have back in our school district. But what we also do is our district will send letters to our students upon graduation, notifying them of when they are eligible to come back and start working after they get their sixty hours. We share with them that they can come back and serve as paras, they can come back and begin the sub. We, we try to do these things to entice our kids. We did a year ago, our educators' experience with all of our kids in the district that had an interest in moving into education. We wanted to do our part two of it. Of course, we didn't get an opportunity to do that. So we want to be able to do part two where we were looking at possibly getting things of the universities and, and bringing people in to talk to our students about what's available for them. But in that first experience, we showed them clips of waiting for Superman. We had our HR department there speaking with the kids. I offered some remarks. There were activities we had the students to do. And these were students in grades nine through twelve that were all interested in education. So I think also having Mr. McNeil over at, over at Manual Tech now, that, that will continue to be a significant focus that we really try to take that pipeline to the next level. But we've been doing, we've been doing some things with, with our current students.
Yeah, absolutely. I was just going to say that I think with Mr. McNeil there, we're hoping to get more traction because we, we've started our Grow Your Own program, but we haven't had as many students actually in the official program as what we would have liked. But we're hoping that, that that will change now that there's more of a focus now on the education pathway. We know that there are a lot of students in our district that are interested in education. We've seen that as Dr. Bedell has said. So we want to make sure that we are further encouraging them to go into education and incentivizing them through some of those scholarship efforts and things. There's also, in addition to the scholarship efforts through Lincoln University, also UMKC is offering scholarships for our Grow Your Own students. And so we're hoping to get more of our kids into that as we have more of a focus of it now in our, through our CTE and our Educational Pathways program. But in the past, as Dr. Bedell was saying, with our students that have gone through, we actually did letters of intent for them. So after they graduated, we had them come back. And we gave them their letter of intent, letting them know that once they successfully complete an education program, that they will be hired back in KCPS, given that there are no major issues, of course, you know, we, we love to have them to come back. And we, we want to make it a big deal for, to really elevate education because we're seeing, once again, looking at the research, fewer people are interested in education. And it's such a noble and important profession. And so we want to really elevate the teaching profession for our students. So they see that as a viable career choice. And they, they choose that as a career choice and then come back and work in our schools. Because once again, that lived experience is so important. They've matriculated our halls, their current students in this district. And for them to come back and serve students that are walking the same walk that they've had to walk, it just, it will make such a major difference. And so we are hoping to increase our numbers this year under our new leadership there at CTE.
Thank you. Any additional questions from board members? I don't see any, but I'm looking. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Collier and Monica Landis. Thank you for this presentation. I just want to say that I appreciate the attention, dedication you've made. I can really see the movement. I also was one of those parents who remembers the days when you would have a substitute teacher on day one at school. So this is extraordinary progress. And I, I appreciate that you've got goals and even stretch goals. And so I look forward to seeing what next year looks like because I definitely see that progression. So with that, Dr. Bedell, I think that you are going to tee up a couple of agenda items for our business meeting on September twenty-third.
All right, absolutely. The, the item that we have that the board would have to take action on is the 2020 tax rate, which must be set by September thirtieth. We will have a public hearing that will be held at six PM on the twenty-third before our regular business meeting. Public will have an opportunity to call in for comment on the tax rate at that time. And what we will do is provide information on the final assessed valuation information for 2019. We'll provide information on Board of Equalization work and implications to revenue, preliminary assessed valuation for 2020. And then the continued impact of BOE work going into 2020, which is the Board of Equalization. And then the intended renewal of the $4.95.99, I mean, 4.9599 rate that's currently in place. So that is the business item that we will ask the board to take action on in two weeks.
And that's part of our state obligation to go through that process and have that in place by the end of the month. Are there any questions on that item or anything that the board wants to request of administration in preparation for that evening? Thank you. With that, then it appears that all items for this agenda are completed. The board is going to remain on, on this Zoom at this time. And we are going to address our executive session, board chair, board governance items that we were not able to complete in the, in the prior meetings. So that is a public component. And so members of the public are able to stay on. But with this, we will conclude this portion of the meeting. And we will return to our executive session open. So I think we can just go straight to that. All right. So where we left off is we had not come to board chair open items. And we know that those board chair open items are pertaining to the board governance goals that, and activities that the board discussed at our retreat on August twenty-second. These board goals flowed out of the board governance self-evaluation that we did this spring with the assistance of MSBA. I provided a brief synopsis and what my takeaway was of next steps. All board members also received the notes and, and information that we took away from our, our various conversations, the note collections, as well as information that was posted on the flip chart material. So I, I will, I wanted to propose, if the board is comfortable with this approach, I think it would be easy to walk through these items. Each one on the, on that short sheet and see if we can talk through next steps, if there's agreement, disagreement, or requests for adjustment in some of these next steps as we go along. So does that work for everyone? Okay, great.
Hey, Madam Chair, just real quick before we get started, do we need Dr. Bedell's team on?
It's only for their choice. You're right. I mean, it is not necessary?
The team can, the team can go. It's about eight to twenty. So yeah, they're done for tonight.
Yep. You, you are kind to bring that up.
With these long days and opening up and everything, so.
Absolutely. Thank you to everybody who joined us tonight from the administration and other parts of the district. So feel free to have an evening left. And Dr. Bedell, I mean, that obviously goes for you, but I'm guessing you want to.
Are you sure?
Part of the conversation.
I mean, I thought, I thought it included me too.
Well, you can be part of this.
Too. I just wanted to make sure.
It's up to you.
Nah, I'm going. I'm hungry.
All right. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you. I appreciate all of you. Oh, this is something I did want to say. I know as people are logging off. I'll, you know, I think we're now, the last time I had an opportunity to catch up with each and every single one of you individually was back in May sometime. So I want to try to frequently find opportunities to be able to, to get to talk to you all individually. So whether that's going through, if you guys want to set up and go and do a couple of school visits with me, you can do that. If you want to get together at lunch or you want to get together after work, just You can do that. If you want to get together at lunch or you want to get together after work, just to sit down and just chat about. You know, our, our work and everything that we're doing, you, we can do both, but I'm, I have no problem doing that, so. I told Sandra that to get something out to start conveying that with you, so I try to do that at least four times a year. Be able to get to spend, just to get to spend some time talking about issues that are important to you and also what you're hearing. As we try to continue to move this organization forward. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Appreciate it.
All right.
Madam Chair, do, do you guys need for me to stay? I can, I have no problem, so.
Um, it isn't, I don't believe it's necessary. I mean, I, you know, I'm sure that there's going to be questions that come out of this conver-. The conversation that we're going to have that's going to necessitate some additional direction either from legal. There's also some of these um, items, uh, Bill, that are going to, that are going to need um. Uh, Dr. Bedell's uh, input, so, but we can talk through what we've got next. And then um, set up the process to uh, solicit feedback from the cabinet or administration as needed.
Well, it's your pleasure. I'm here to serve, so if you need me, I'll stay and if not, I can boogie.
Well, are you, are you here on site? Is that?
I am.
Okay, so you are a distance from, from your boat, so I would say why don't you head out? And we'll, we'll catch it, we'll circle back to you.
Okay, well, let me know what I need to do. Thank you. You guys have a great night.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
And, and Patty, just one, one other thing and. Um, I hate to kind of follow the crowd out, but at some point I'm going to have to bail really early. I've got class on Friday and Saturday and just. Have a bunch to try to get done before then, so I will catch up with you and appreciate the, the, the board's grace on letting me sort of. Kick out here in the next thirty minutes.
Okay, that sounds good. I appreciate it too. All right, everyone, so when we met. Um, we talked about on strategies one and two. That our next steps would be to ask the Communications and Community Engagement Committee. To kind of take the lead and handle items one and two. Um, I wanted to see if there's any additional um, questions or issues related to that. If there, if we are in agreement, we don't have to take a vote of action. We can just test for consensus on this because we have that existing structure. And we can go ahead and hand those two items to the Communications and Community Engagement Committee. And their process would be, they would discuss it and they would come back. Um, and bring, you know, a set of draft uh, language. I mean, I, I don't want to. Force a deadline on the committee, um, Marvia, but I think you could probably. Uh, you have a meeting, I believe, next week, correct?
It's actually on the twenty-fourth. We had to move it due to a, something else that's on the eighteen.
Okay, so maybe when you, you meet, you can also, as you start this work, you can um, send an email out. And just give the board a, a kind of a sense of the timing for that.
Yeah.
Okay, and everybody good with that? Am I thumbs up on that? Great, okay. So on um, strategy three. In, in this, we talked about um, establishing times for agenda items, setting time limits. For questions during presentations, this, and also creating a protected time for board member voice. During executive session. Clearly, none of that occurred tonight. And there are probably a lot of reasons for that, but um. The other component of this piece was the use of the new board priority tracking tool. Um, I know that June, I think, has that tool. June's on the call, still here with us. Nate, is there, is that something that you and June are working on together yet? Or is that something we need to do first? Uh, you're muted, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, um, I know that June sent me something. I have not looked at it. I'm guessing it's spreadsheet. June, quick question, are you on that? Does it sort of incorporate those, I'll call it ten, or maybe, you know, plus or minus. Three or four items that was on that original draft document that we showed um, the board at the retreat?
Yes, it does. It does. I picked up those items from the retreat.
Okay, so I think um, assuming we have those, I think. We could probably start the process. I think there needs to be a conversation, Patty, with you and I and June around. Some of the cadence through the conversation, because it's going to be a little awkward at first because it's going to. Up the sort of really organic flow that we have today. Um, but I think once we get into a little bit of a rhythm around how to interject those components, then it'll probably flow okay for everyone. But initially, it's probably going to feel a little bit different than the way we interact today.
Let's, let's the three of us, maybe next steps for us is the three of us.
Yeah.
Set up a call together and um, kind of figure out kind of that flow and then how we. Sort of create a system for weekly, a weekly touch base. To know where, where things fall into that tracking, right?
Yeah, so maybe June, can you pull the three of us together, not next week, but the following week? For just an hour? So that I don't.
Do that. That's great. All right, perfect. So the week after next, you're saying. Okay. Um, it just, so everybody knows, I did, and I did in fact have kind of a. The time scheduled for tonight, but because of some of the challenges we have with technology, which I want to follow up on. Um, you know, after this meeting, I want to follow up in the next day or two to find out what we need to do. Just to kind of smooth that out. We had a lot of difficulty tonight, so we did lose a lot of time, in fact. And um, and that was disappointing and frustrating. Um. But is there anything else within this that you feel, that the board feels is missing? So what, uh, just to kind of give you some sense of it, I know that the board, when we talked at the retreat. You know, we wanted to kind of time things out and maybe even create some heart for me to create. Like a, kind of a set time for how much time we would dedicate for Q and A during board presentations. We talked about that. I, I know what June and I've talked about at this stage. Is that on Mondays, I'll make an effort to outline what I think are the likely times. So that when the officers meet on the Tuesday with the administration. We can, we, the officers can help with administration to assess whether those times are really realistic. If they're really practical and realistic. Does that feel like a good way to approach this? And I'm kind of, I'm looking at everyone, but I'm also looking at Nate and Manny.
Yeah, I think, I, I think let's, I don't even think you need to do the whole Monday thing, Patty, honestly, like I don't. You've got, you're, you're trying to pull all this stuff together and I. Yeah, it's a lot, right? And so I want to be sensitive to that, because you are putting in a ton of time to try to coordinate all this stuff. I think let's not overcomplicate it. As we go into those Tuesday morning meetings with the off, or with Dr. Bedell and team. What I would say is, as each topic comes up, let's suggest the amount of time that seems appropriate. And, and make the call. And so some of that's going to force Dr. Bedell and team to sort of fit their stuff into those timeframes. But we want thoughtful about his time, his team's time, and frankly, the board's time as well, because we're all sort of working all day and then coming into that. So I'd say, let's just be really intentional between the three of us on Tuesday morning, set some timeframes and then. It's going to take a little bit of you and I and June during those meetings to really sort of stick to it. And, and, and be okay with sort of interjecting. And you did that a couple of times tonight, right? Where you're like, okay, guys, we gotta, we gotta move this along. I think we're just going to have to. Be pretty intentional about that to keep to a schedule that's meaningful, so is that okay?
That is good for me. I think what I'll need is ongoing feedback for um, as we try to do that. Because I know that's not always comfortable or people don't always feel satisfied at that moment and I'm trying to kind of. Uh, do that, but also not trying to be disrespectful, people's desire to, you know, have a voice. And so, you know, I know we're trying to manage and also allow for voice, so I, I appreciate that and feedback from everyone. And, and all feedback will be accepted with full grace. I mean, we gotta figure it out together.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, so um, I think that kind of takes us down to um. Let's see, number four. Uh, that was just the, the establishing uh, formal discussion meeting and we didn't take that up per se. That wasn't, we decided to kind of address it through better management of our time with the agenda. So we, you know, part of that goal is really that, how do we build more discussion time into our agendas? And allow for board voice and to have protected time for board voice, so it doesn't, doesn't. Every single board meeting get knocked off of the schedule and how can board voice be more than a five-minute component? And I think that was one of the things that came out from the board and so the best way. We decided collectively, we didn't want to create separate meetings at this time, we'll just try to manage the agenda time better. And I think that's where everybody is on that one. So coming down to the monitoring schedule. Um, on the monitoring reports, this is an area that we will need to, um, I have shared. This information with Dr. Bedell, but I'm going to ask um, that Nate, Manny and I at the next. Uh, officer meeting, uh, you know, take a little bit of time with them to um, maybe it's. You know, set aside fifteen minutes with them to just talk through a little more about what we're thinking. Because we haven't really talked as a body to the superintendent, I've given him that update. I know that they are. They are working on it. They were trying to work on that with this presentation. Um, my personal feeling is that they might have been able to, it was a very strong presentation, but they. For me, I think they might have been able to even tighten it a little bit further. And so it, it's, it's a little bit like some of the other things, Nate, that you were talking about. It's a work in progress, right? Where, you know, we don't just go out and run a marathon tomorrow, we gotta train a bit, train up. So are there any like comments, anything about the monitoring schedule that anyone wants to comment on? I think. Okay, so I think for Nate and Manny and I, let's, let's make sure that we do discuss that at the next officer meeting. Since I know it's, it's hard to meet in between time. Um. Let's see, on strategy six, complete the full review of policies for alignment to equity and achievement. So we know that we will have unconscious bias training next Wednesday on September sixteenth. And that we're going to, and that will be facilitated by Dr. Davis. And um, in, in addition, the board has agreed to request additional information and response from administration regarding suspension policies. So here's, I have a, I want to um, query the group now. Dr. Bedell contacted me. This morning and asked if we would be, we willing to add thirty minutes to next Wednesday's meeting. And so start next Wednesday's training at five o'clock instead of five thirty. And use the five o'clock to five thirty time period to uh, walk, to share with us. Their just brief outline of how they're going to approach code of conduct, uh, that work. And secondly, I think he wants to just uh, offer a couple of their initial thoughts regarding how they want to go about their process. Related to the um, action that we undertook at the last meeting. To request the administration come back to the board with recommendations as to how they would, what. But systems and, and work would need to be in place in order to eliminate suspensions at the elementary level. So he requested if he could have thirty minutes and then Daryl Davis start at five thirty. So can I get some feedback on um, giving them that extra time and if you all are available for that time? Rita's thumbs up, Jen, Marvia, Manny, okay.
What's the date again on that, Patty?
It's next Wednesday on the sixteenth. Okay, so June, we'll let Dr. Bedell know that we have agreement on that on the sixteenth. We will start at five PM and of course, that's going to be via Zoom.
Going to be via Teams.
Our Teams.
I don't like Zoom.
So then, um, we come to um, strategy seven, which is the onboarding process for new board members. And um, we did um. We did talk about that this would be a establishment of a short-term task force. With a, um, the particular purpose of developing, reviewing and. Uh, developing um, onboarding material for new school, school board members. With a goal of being ready with completed materials uh, in December. In advance of the opening of candidate filing. And when we met for the retreat, we discussed. Um, that we solicited volunteers being Marvia, Rita and Nate. Did I get that right from my notes? Okay. Nate's looking puzzled. Did you volunteer for that or did you, am I, did I get it wrong?
Um, no, I think, I, sure, I don't, I don't remember honestly, but I'm, I'm happy to, to be part of it. Um. Marvia, do you remember PM? So, okay, so it's the three of us. All right, well then there you go.
Okay.
Yep.
Alrighty.
Something you're going these days, so.
Okay, and we also determined that the deadline for materials back to the board for consideration. Was October thirty-first. Now, I, you know, I'm not looking at my calendar, but. Um, I think that might have been a weekend or something, but.
The twenty-eighth would be actually the next board meeting.
So I guess the question is, would you be able to bring it back on the twenty-eighth? Or would your preference be? To have the materials ready by November sixth, such that the board would have them in hand. For consideration on the eleventh.
I would prefer the latter because that way we're not doing it during a business meeting and which those agendas tend to be much more uh, full.
I agree, yep. And I also think.
A reminder, we have only one meeting.
I'm sorry, say it again.
We have only one meeting in November and one meeting in December.
Yep, that is true, but, but it'll give you additional time. Um, and I think if we could, if we could, if you had it in hand for the board for June to upload on the sixth. Then um. You know, it shouldn't be complex material. We should not have extent, extensive debate on it. So is everybody comfortable with that timeline? All right, so as we establish this ad hoc task force. Um, it will be Nate, Marvia and Rita. And they will have material back to June. For board review on Friday, November sixth. With our intention of taking action on the eleventh. Because in fact, we will only have one meeting again in December. And that should meet also just by establishing the timeline, the purpose and the three-person membership. Allows us to follow our guidelines for establishing committees and ad hoc task forces. June, is that, am I correct on that? Have I done that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. Um, so then we come to the establishment of a board. So then we come to the establishment of a board finance and audit committee. And, oh, I want to say one more thing before I come to these two. I meant to say this, the one thing that I've not yet talked to Dr. Bedell about, and I recognize that today on the monitoring reports and the materials, is I have not actually talked to him about the hard deadline on Friday. So I may, I talked to June about this earlier today, and I've made a note to follow up with him tomorrow. It just was not something, it just kind of went past me in that conversation. And so I am going to talk with him about that, and so that we can really try to get adherence to that, that, because that was a considerable topic of discussion. So just FYI on that. All right, so coming to the establishment of a board finance and audit committee. So, thank you, Rita, who put a lot of work into putting a draft together for a draft statement of purpose and responsibilities. That has also been shared with Dr. Bedell and Linda and Bill Thornton. And I think Dr. Bedell would like the chance to talk to Linda about the, some of the scope and what the, you know, how that would work with his staff. And so, because he, he's just received that as well this, this week, I guess yesterday. And so I wanted to, though, open it up for conversation now, because the board has the details of, of what's been put down on paper. So I'm gonna stop talking for a minute and open it up for any questions and thoughts on where we are on that.
Rita, can, thank you for putting it together. I thought it was extremely well thought out. I am interested to hear what administration has to say. I don't really have much to add. I thought it was, went into detail about what was going to be the scope and the responsibilities, who was going to be on it. I do think, just double-check the, against CARB or whatever it is we use for committee structure and all that other kind of stuff, but, you know, making sure it's in compliance with that. But I just appreciate you stepping up and getting that written up, so we can get going on that.
Happy to do it. So Patty, can we ask the administration to provide feedback, so that we can finalize this at our next board meeting?
Yes, absolutely. And I think for everyone else, too, I think it would be helpful for everyone else to do that as well. I, I think, you know, I have a few notes, Rita, that I owe you back, just regarding, you know, some of the policy, and I have a couple of questions, and I'll just follow up with you on some of those questions. But, yeah, we, my, what I said to Dr. Bedell is that our intention would be to finalize this at the next, at the business meeting and executive session. Any other thoughts on that?
Could we set a date, a deadline for getting their feedback, and getting feedback from all the board members, so that we have a day or two to integrate any comments or concerns before, before the Friday, before the board meeting?
Would it be practical for the board, could we say a week from today, on Wednesday, the 16th? Would that'll help people, like, organize their brains, since we know we have another board obligation? Not that we would talk about it that night, but just like it's another board day? Would that work for you, Rita?
That's fine, and could we ask the administration to do the same?
Yep, absolutely.
That would give me two days to make revisions and get it back to everybody on Friday, so that we need to, through another version, we've got time before the following meeting.
Okay, so June, will you help put that in the tracking? And will you, on Friday, send a loving reminder in the Friday update to the board? Okay, so for Wednesday, the 16th. And then we had the proposal for impact model of equity funding, and what I had down, based on the, there was a lot of wide-ranging discussion on that, but I think what I took away from looking back at the notes, and everybody has both flip chart and also notes that June took, and was that really, there was a lot of energy, my carryaway from that conversation was how, a lot of energy as to how administration can engage stakeholders in budget discussions and prioritization. But I want to kind of hear what other people are thinking, was the, what next steps you might identify for that.
I think we still are missing the administration's take on the proposal at large. I think that was from months ago, where we still were, the things were just kind of peddling. So I would suggest the same method that Rita had suggested, is a timed mechanism that says, Dr. Bedell and administration will respond by this, and we respond by blank. And that way, it sets it in motion, so we're not perpetually talking about the same things.
That we can do. June, will you help me keep track of that? So are you asking, are you wanting their feedback by the 16th? Or can, can we agree that to give some additional time to them?
I mean, I, I think the challenge is that if we wanted to actually, if something comes out of it that we're gonna take action on, we can't do it other than these two board meetings that are coming up, right? So I would assume the timeline would be the same, and that if there is anything that we would do, we would do it within this year, otherwise, kind of relinquish the fact that we're gonna accomplish it next year.
I'll talk to Dr. Bedell and see if we can also get that feedback from them on the 16th. I mean, I think the one thing that I would say is that, and I kind of opened this up for everybody to comment and, and help me make sure that I'm not overinterpreting. In the, my takeaway from the notes and the flip charts, that we didn't come to a shared agreement as to exactly where we collectively landed. We talked about some of the aspects of the parent engagement piece and community engagement that people liked. We didn't have shared agreement as to doing the funding piece, so we weren't collective in that. So maybe what we ought to do, I'm, I'm not sure if we should just go ahead and first, separate from that, have the administration provide their feedback. But in the discussion, we didn't come to a singular, like a clearly articulated decision point that I could find from that, from my notes and from the documentation that we took. So I kind of opened it up to people to comment on that. You all don't have to be muted.
Yeah, I don't remember if we did either, so that's why I'm, I'm, if everybody could jog my memory, like, did we decide we were ready to ask for them to respond? Or did we still have work to do on our side?
Thought that we left it at, you know, the, the administration could provide valuable feedback that we would use, you know, so that they could help shape the proposal. That's what I thought, but I'm not, I'm not certain.
My recollection as well.
All right, so we will ask the administration for some feedback on the proposal. I will talk with Dr. Bedell and see if they would be prepared to provide feedback on the proposal by the 16th. June, if you'll keep track of that, and we'll, we'll circle back on that one. So the one, the one thing that is not on this list right now, because it wasn't a highly formalized item, but we did, we ended the day that day, talking about wanting to begin conversation and partnership with administration regarding how we would pursue a bond initiative. And so I have had the chance to talk to Linda Quinley only briefly, and she has said that she would be able to prepare for the board a brief presentation on what kinds of work and steps are generally undertaken in the process of doing a bond initiative? What are the, what's the pre-work? What are the necessary components? Both based on her own professional experience, but as to how school districts around the state of Missouri undertake that kind of work. So I do not believe we can fit that into September. And so I think I want to get a sense from you all if we want to talk to her about the possibility of having her do that kind of presentation for us in October. And I want some feedback on that.
Could we, so I think I'm probably one of the advocates that's pushing for faster, faster discussion on this, just because I think the political timing is very important, and next year, we're gonna still be in COVID response, and then we're gonna be in recovery. And I think within the next year, if not sooner, you're gonna, we are going to get a flush of cash that is gonna put us in a very political, very different political situation, where people are gonna see, oh, we've got millions and billions of dollars going to schools, and whether we are getting it physically, or the perception is that we're getting it, we're gonna lose some of that motivation of, we need resources. So I, I would actually recommend we workshop it at some point in a special meeting in September, November, and really try to push this for a faster timeline, because unfortunately, we're gonna get bound by whatever book the next administration or this administration writes, and we're gonna miss out again, or have to fight a rhetoric of, well, you just got billions of dollars, so why do you need more? So that would be my suggestion.
So, yeah, I mean, frankly, we can't fit it into the September meeting, bottom line. I mean, I know that we've been resistant somewhat, or at least my senses were resistant to special workshop meeting, but I think we would need to have a special workshop meeting. Yeah, I mean, it just, we can't, we can't balance all the time management and content, and, you know.
I think if we tried to put it into a September, I, you know, I agree. I think the timing is, is gonna push us. I'm okay with a special workshop, I mean, very finite, you know? It's one subject, you know, an hour, hour and a half, too.
Okay, all right. So work with the administration on what that timing will look like, and come back to everyone. May I feel like I did this fast? What, is there anything you all want to pull back on? Is there anything else? Okay. Well, with that, 8:54 PM, folks. Luckily, there's a candy basket here, I can nibble on. All right, well, thank you. I think we are all done, we've got our, our go-to items. I appreciate everyone staying. Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you.